Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, September 17th, 2019. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I'm your deputy city clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Nick Miller. The following is a list of legislation to be presented by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess presents Bill Number 2053. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the chief equity officer to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract between the City of Pittsburgh and the Government Alliance on Race and Equity in order to receive training and develop a racial equity toolkit in an amount not to exceed $26,235, subject to appropriation. Bill Number 2054. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in the amount of $6,234.14 in favor of James A. Gordon Jr., care of Amanda Bonner, for damage to his parked vehicle near the intersection of Birchland Street and Bellar Place from a City Department of Public Works' salt truck on January 18th, 2019. Bill Number 2055. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with community-based organizations for community and economic development, for planning assistance in various neighborhoods in the city, and providing operating support for these groups, and to provide for the payment at a cost not to exceed $700,000, and this bill is sponsored by Reverend Burgess. Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith presents Bill Number 2056. Resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of Civil and Environmental Consultants, Inc., in an amount of $18,488.46 in emergency payment for production of the nine-mile-run wetland monitoring report due to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection in order to comply with the PADEP, Department of the Army section. Bill Number 2057. Resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Department of Public Works to apply for a grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Fund for up to $500,000 to provide funding for the design and construction of a new park building for the Cowley Recreation Center project, and should the grant be awarded by RAC, are authorized to enter into agreements with RAC. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides foreign agreement and expenditures not to exceed $500,000 for this stated purpose. Bill Number 2058. Resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Department of Public Works to apply for a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Keystone Communities Program to provide funding for the Highland Park Pedestrian Tunnel Project, and should the grant be awarded by DCED, are authorized to enter into agreements with DCED. This grant proposal includes an ask of $500,000 with a local match of $682,638.33 to be contributed by the City of Pittsburgh's 2020 capital budget from the Park Reconstruction Line item. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides foreign agreement and expenditures not to exceed $1,182,638.33 for this stated purpose. Bill Number 2059. Resolution granting unto Ice Factory Limited Partnership, their successors in the signs, the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense three protective bollards in constructing a new stormwater tap at 143rd Street in the 6th Ward, 7th Council District. Bill Number 2060. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's Automated Red Light Enforcement Program to replace traffic signals at the intersection of Bigelow Boulevard and Bayard Street in the North Oakland Neighborhood, and further providing foreign agreement and expenditures not to exceed $165,000 for this stated purpose. Bill Number 2061. Resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Multimodal Transportation Fund Program, should the grant be awarded by DCED, to provide funding for the Grandview Avenue Project. The grant proposal includes an ask of $1,848,700 with a local match of $792,300 included in the 2020 City of Pittsburgh's capital budget. Councilwoman Erica Strausberger presents Bill Number 2062. Resolution amending Resolution 158 of 2017, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement with Computronics USA, Inc., for the provision of permitting and licensing package and an additional cost not to exceed $1,480,000 over the next two years. That concludes the reading of the legislation for presentation. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Tuesday, September 17th, 2019. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Conville, Ms. Harris, Ms. Harris.
Mr. Lavelle, Mr. O'Connor, Mrs. Kell Smith, Ms. Strausberger.
Here.
Mr. Crowe's president.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance, and we ask that you would then remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Our next order of business is proclamations. We'll begin with Councilwoman Strausberger, followed by Councilwoman Harris, and followed by Councilwoman Kell Smith. Good morning, Councilwoman.
Dr. George and everyone from the Space Supercomputer Pit Group would come up. I understand we have some students who might be on their way. So it's not often, I was just saying, it's not often that our proclamations come with graphics, so this is very, very exciting.
Props.
Yeah, some props. So I'll jump into it. Whereas, Dr. Alan George founded the National Science Foundation Center for Space, High Performance, and Resilient Computing, SREC, at the University of Pittsburgh in September 2017. And whereas, SREC's research focus is mission-critical computing, which includes space computing, high-performance computing, and resilient computing to advance the state-of-the-art in computer and electrical engineering for harsh environments such as outer space. And whereas, SREC attracts more than $1 million in external research funding to the University of Pittsburgh Swanson School of Engineering each year, with Pitt as the lead institution, joined by nearly 40 partners across academia, industry, and government agencies. Whereas, in its first reconfigurable space computing system was developed to the International Space Station as part of NASA and DoD's space test program, Houston Five payload in February 2017. And whereas NASA and DoD's next mission in May 2019 carried SREC's latest system called spacecraft Supercomputing for Image and Video Processing, an even more advanced space computer designed by students and faculty from the Swanson School's Department of Electrical and Computer Engineering and Mechanical Engineering and Material Science. Whereas, the new SSIVP system is nearly three times more powerful than its predecessor and contains dual-high-resolution cameras capable of photographing stunning images of Earth and features high performance and reliability with low power, size, weight, and cost, which are unprecedented in computers used today in space. And whereas, because of the engineering students' passion for Pitt and the Swanson School, they embossed the Pitt script on the supercomputer's gold casing, which is visible to the astronauts onboard the ISS. And whereas, SREC and the University of Pittsburgh have now established and are operating two research platforms in space, thanks to NASA, DoD, and especially the ingenuity of the Swanson School's students and faculty. Whereas, with these two successful space projects, SREC is now developing two more missions to the ISS, encouraging greater collaboration across the University of Pittsburgh and attracting more attention to prospective students in becoming the next generation of space engineering researchers. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby celebrate the significant impact of Dr. Alan George and recognizes the important contribution of the Center for Space, High Performance, and Resilient Computing to the Pittsburgh community. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, September 17th, 2019 to be Pitt Space Supercomputer Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Congratulations on your good work.
And this is for the rest of the group as well.
Well, thank you so much for this honor. We greatly appreciate it. I'm joined by my colleague, Professor Matt Berry from Mechanical Engineering. I'm from Electrical and Computer Engineering at the University of Pittsburgh. I know professors are known for talking for long periods, so I'll keep this very brief. A quick overview of our story. We are an NSF, National Research Center. NSF is the National Science Foundation. We're a national research center called SREC, like the animated character. The S in SREC stands for space. And we focus on research and technology and education in space computing, high-performance computing, and resilient computing. We were supposed to be joined by about eight or 10 of our 30 graduate students, but it seems they're either in class, good for them, or lost on the way. But we're very much a student-centric center. We are a partnership. Our center consists of four universities and about 36 industry and government partners. We're about 40 partners in all, working together on research in this area. Now it's funny, if you ask all of the students what they wanted to be when they were kids, I think almost everyone, including Matt and myself, might say they wanted to be astronauts. And in a sense, that's what we are. We're living vicariously through our technology. We're developing space computing, space sensing, space communications technologies. We're flying them and we're testing them. Right now, we have two systems on the space station that we operate from campus, just down the road in Oakland. We have another that goes up in a year and a half and another that goes up a year after that. So we'll have four different systems on the space station run from campus. It's a great opportunity for the students because they work closely with these companies and agencies. I joke with them that they're on perpetual internships when they're in grad school, because, in fact, when I was an assistant professor, my biggest scare in the world was when my students that I was recruiting for grad school would say to me, "No, I'm not going to grad school because I want real-world experience," and that hurt. But they never say that anymore, because now in this type of a center, they get real-world experience every day, working side-by-side with these companies and agencies. So in closing, I want to thank everyone for this honor, and Dr. Berry for his many contributions, and our dozens and dozens of students that make these space missions possible. And maybe I'll help by pointing out what you're looking at on these posters. In the middle is our second space system, the one that launched last May. That's the Space Supercomputer. It's a tower. It's gold on the outside to reflect some of the sun's energy. It has the Pitt logo on top. You can see the two camera lenses. That's sitting on a table in our lab in Oakland. And then, on the left here, of course, that's the International Space Station. It's hard for me to point out, but in the bottom-middle section, our system is attached there. But we're way too far away for you to see it very clearly. But if you were to zoom into that location, then you would see what's on the third poster. That was taken by the robot arm on the space station. That big white box over there, if you look on the right of it, you'll see this gold square, and you have to probably come up to see it more closely. But it says Pitt right in the middle of it. And so right now, there's this Pitt logo adorned to the space station that anyone in space, not that there are many, anyone in space can see and photograph. So again, thank you for this honor. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Congratulations. You know, it's amazing. We don't know what's happening in Pittsburgh until you have opportunities to learn about these kinds of endeavors and just right down the street from us. This is what we're doing. Truly incredible. Can we get all members up here for a photo? And we'll leave this here and we'll give it to you.
Oh, thank you.
Good morning.
I'll cover target.
Yeah, right.
It's your house.
That's amazing.
It's your house.
Come on in. Come on in for a photo.
Okay, Councilwoman Harris.
Beau, you want to come up? And if you have anyone else with you? I don't know if people realize it or not, but September 21st is International Day of Peace. Okay. There we go. And you would think that just one day, we could have peace all over the world. And hopefully, we do on September 21st. This proclamation reads, I'm using bigger letters here. Whereas, in 2001, the General Assembly of the United Nations unanimously adopted Resolution 5582, thereby declaring September 21st of each year as International Day of Peace. And whereas, consequently, to the intent of this resolution, all people, institutions, organizations, worldwide are invited to celebrate a Day of Peace and nonviolence by creating their own unique demonstration for prayer, along with a variety of other spiritual and sector observance. And whereas, it is the hope of the United Nations and all participants involved in the International Day of Peace that such aforementioned activity will ultimately work to support a global ceasefire to occur annually on September 21st. And whereas, Mr. Stan Willett and Mr. Al Snyder, two Pittsburgh residents, have written arrangements and recorded "One Day of Peace," a song specifically composed for International Day of Peace. And whereas, locally, the International Day of Peace will be commemorative and celebrated with a number of activities, including, but not limited to, peace vigil, special programming on PCTV-21, awareness events hosted by Arrow National, Air Ambulance and Charter, CCBC, the Community College of Beaver County, Davis Design and Development, Freedom Area School District, Sisters of St. Joseph, and Wednesday Night Basketball Association. And whereas, Mr. Beau Mess has been a driving force in this commemorative of the International Day of Peace and Peace Day within the City of Pittsburgh, Allegheny County, and other surrounding counties, using his talents, time, and a sense of commitment to show that Pittsburghers are committed to practice of peace worldwide. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Thursday, September 21st, 2019 to be International Day of Peace and Peace Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
Come here.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Well, just a thanks to the Pittsburgh City Council for taking the time to recognize this. It's like, we get good at what we practice at. Sports, our science that we just looked at, I mean, phenomenal. So whatever we take time to practice at, we get good at. We're taking time. We're making a statement in Pittsburgh. Peace is important. Peace is possible. So thank you very much for taking the time and have a great day. Thank you.
And as a reminder, oh, I'm sorry. I'm Sister Carrie with the Sisters of St. Joseph. And just a reminder, the theme this year for International Day of Peace is Climate Action for Peace. And so there will be a climate march outside of this building Friday at noon. And I'd just like to invite you to look at our personal lifestyles, how the way we're living might be affecting our climate, and also what types of industries we're inviting into our region and how that might affect our climate and thereby affect world peace. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Sister Barbara from the Sisters of St. Joseph. And for the last 18 years, I've organized events here in Allegheny County. And as Sister Carrie alluded to, this is a day that helps us remember and bring to our consciousness that we are to practice all forms that eliminate all forms of violence. So I invite you to consider that in your private lives, but also your public lives. And Mr. President, not too many years ago, we presented the council with a peace poll, and it would be lovely if you would present it during this week. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And since we're trying to have peace all over nationally at Pittsburgh, if all of council would come up, because it's for all of our districts, and I'm hoping, one day, just one day, out of 365, there is no violence. Here, I have more for you. There's more than five persons.
Okay, Councilwoman Kell Smith. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Will Sharon Zellis and the Zellis family please come forward? Good morning. Good morning. We were here once before for, you were here once before, for a proclamation for Denise Zellis, who also became a National Jefferson Award winner. So now, you can see it runs in the family, because we're here today with Sharon Zellis White. And they're just an amazing family that they do so much in our community and mostly just give back to the community where they live and beyond, the whole family. So I just want to thank you for all that you do. Whereas, Sharon Zellis White is the founder and executive director of the Five James Foundation, a nonprofit organization which benefits widows, orphans, and women in Kenya, Uganda, Mexico, and the City of Pittsburgh. And whereas, the Five James Foundation was birthed in 2011 after a trip to Kenya where Ms. White was introduced to five widows. Being a widow herself, Sharon had a special place in her heart for these women. And whereas, in addition, Sharon lost five loved ones, all of whom carry the name James. And the Book of James in the Bible, which has only five chapters, speaks strongly about caring for widows. Hence, the Five James Foundation was born. And whereas, Ms. White continued to visit Kenya in the next five years, since her initial visit. And in 2016, she was asked to lead a team to Guadalajara to minister to women and children in crisis and lead a children's basketball camp during vacation Bible school. I didn't know you could do that, too. You have all kinds of talents. And whereas, in addition to her work with the Five James Foundation, Sharon is currently supporting two young girls to attend the Neighborhood Academy. And she is a member of the Allegheny Center Alliance Church, where she is the administrative coordinator for an aftercare jail and prison ministry support group, the facilitator for the grief share, and founded the Widows Ministry. And whereas, Ms. White is the author of an award-winning book titled "I Am Ready to Come Right Away: A Personal Story About Her 22-Year-Old Grandson Who Passed Away From Stage Four Hodgkin's Lymphoma While Serving His Four-to-Eight-Year Prison Term." She wrote the book, hoping to give anyone grieving a reason to put their faith in God. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Sharon Zellis White for her selfless work serving widows in our city and abroad. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, September 17th, 2019 to be Sharon Zellis White Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations. Great work.
We're going to have Sharon say a few words, and then I know her sister, Missy, is going to say something, and then a gentleman would like to speak to.
Yes.
First and foremost, I want to give all praise, honor, and glory to our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I am humbled and honored that he would see fit that a little black girl from McKees Rocks would be standing before my great city of Pittsburgh.
Next to a Lebanese woman.
Being honored for a service that only he could have instilled in my heart to do. I'm humbled. I'm thankful, and I really appreciate. I'm humbled, I'm thankful, and I really appreciate the acknowledgement of the service that Lord has given me. Thank you.
Sharon is my rock. When I feel like I can't breathe, I call her for oxygen. She has withstood more than most women could ever bear. And I'm so grateful to have her as my sister, my friend, my strength. I'm proud of you, sis.
Again, I just want to mention that Missy, who just spoke, is a national Jefferson Award winner. So I just want to say...
Thanks.
Well, Sharon, I've known you for about ten years. And the history of Christian heroism is a picture of people under great suffering, exhibiting great resilience, great courage, great determination, and astonishing faith. And I know you to have suffered so much with the loss of the Five Jameses. And I've watched you return to a place of incredible victory and power in your life. And I salute you. You're an amazing person, and it's a privilege for me to know you. Thank you.
I want to thank council for recognizing this outstanding woman. And I had the privilege of being in Africa with her on the trip that when she came home, she said, "I've buried my loved ones on the continent and came home and decided to make a difference in her world." And she has done that in spite of, as you've heard, the personal pain and that she has been through. But we're just all here to say that Sharon Zellis White is the real deal. And what you are recognizing here today is a person of significance, a person of substance, and all of us are the better for having known her. So thank you again for this honor for her, and please, all of you, keep up the good work. And we, over at Allegheny Center Alliance, always have you in our prayers. So keep up, keep up the good work.
Just real briefly, could you both tell people if they want to get involved in your organization, if they want to donate, what they have to do? Is there a phone number, contact for both of yours? Because, Missy, you do a lot of work, too, in the community. And you're amazing, so.
Thank you. Five James Foundation, you can send donations to PO Box 100213, Pittsburgh, PA 15233. The website is www.fivejamesfoundation.org.
And you can find her book on amazon.com?
Yes, oh, yes. How could I forget? My award-winning book, you could purchase at Amazon. It's called, "I Am Ready to Come Right Away." It's a statement my grandson made when he was requesting to be granted privileges to attend church service in the State Correctional Institute, right there on the north side, just before he died. And you can also contact me if you want a copy and save on a postage.
Hi. If you want to donate to Zealous Hope Project...
Or volunteer.
Or volunteer at Zealous Hope Project, you can contact us at zealoushope.com, or you can reach us at 731 Shore Tears Avenue, McKees Rocks, PA. Thank you.
All of council want to come up, since they do serve the city of Pittsburgh. Both of them serve the city and beyond. So thank you for your work very much.
And one for me, please. So we have a number of proclamations to be read into the record as well. Madam Clerk?
Council President Kraus presents. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does recognize, celebrate, and thank Dr. Silvestri for all of his achievements and his impacts in public health. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, September 21st, 2019 to be Dr. Tony Silvestri Day in the city of Pittsburgh. Councilwoman Kell Smith presents. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, September 14th, 2019 to be Bill Masucci Day in the city of Pittsburgh. Councilman O'Connor presents. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize, commend, and congratulate Clifford Slajak Charlton for receiving the legendary Lifetime Achievement Award from NABE Christian Ministries for his extraordinary body of work as an exemplary professional and a dedicated role model in the service of his community. Councilman O'Connor also presents these next couple. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize, commend, and congratulate Dr. Kathy Humphrey for receiving the Lifetime Achievement Award from NABE Christian Ministries for her extraordinary body of work as an exemplary professional and a dedicated role model in the service of her community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize, commend, and congratulate Luther J. Sewell Jr. and Roxanne Norman Sewell for receiving the 2019 Legendary Lifetime Achievement Award from NABE Christian Ministries for their extraordinary body of work as exemplary professionals and dedicated role models in the service of their community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend Sophia Germanaro for her dedicated work to improve the lives of others and congratulates her on receiving the NABE Christian Ministries Community Youth Service Leadership Award. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend Tonette R. Stewart for her dedicated work to improve the lives of others and congratulates her on receiving the NABE Christian Ministries Community She-Ro Leadership Award. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize, commend, and congratulate Wayne Jones for receiving the Young Professional Leadership Award from NABE Christian Ministries for being an inspirational change agent with exceptional training, strategic leadership skills, strength, character, endurance, faith, intelligence, and vision.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion in a second, please?
Come here.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. That concludes the proclamation portion of the council meeting and takes us into public comment. Anyone wishing to speak before City Council today will have three minutes in which to do so. I would like to take this opportunity to remind everyone here that our rules of council are clear when they state that comment is limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation, which are at this time, or could at another time come before City Council. We will not permit profanity, and we will maintain order at all times. I ask that you would please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for our public record. The green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have one minute to summarize your thoughts. When the red light comes on, your time will have expired. Could we have our first speaker, please? Can we have our first speaker, please? Okay, Dr. Miller, good morning.
Mein Huhn. Dr. Ronaldan Miller, Beltsever, and West End in the city of Pittsburgh. Global Intelligence Society candidate for President 2020, American Physical Society, American Astronomical Society. Exascale Computing is not present in the city. International Neural Network Society and American Chemical Society. The mirror neuron theory is that individual mirror behavior is facilitated by brain mirror neurons. September 2019 is Global Intelligence-sponsored Latinx Intelligence Month. Dr. Bernardo Usayi, Argentinian chemistry nobleist, the botuiterie, he claimed rightly regulates sugar metabolism, so central to the understanding of diabetes. A concern of City Council is citizen speech. My position is that the freest, least censored citizen's speech is crucial to our democracy. A sub-concern of the Pittsburgh Council is therefore accountability for or of district representatives concerning speech, especially in this context. The actions of a DR, mirror actions of the City Council leader. Focal point one. When the representative of any of the nine council districts interrupts, causes trouble for a citizen doing public comment, this is mirroring the pattern that has been offered over the last five years at least by President Kraus in his disruptions of the public comments of Gianpolo 2016, Brown 2013, 14, 15, and Miller 2015. I, the Global Intelligence Society, conclude that Mr. Kraus has unconstitutionally constricted Pittsburgh citizen speech, citizen's speech. When Ms. Gross interrupted me 17 July 2016, she was mirroring Mr. Kraus. The second focal point is that when Reverend Mr. Burgess, he calls himself that, recites the profanity prohibition, he is mirroring Mr. Kraus's delusional prohibition that is found nowhere in the Pittsburgh City Council rules. So the probabilities are that challenge to retention of councilor offices are .95 probability for the representative of District Three and .75 for District Seven and .50 for District Nine. There will be a class action suit against this council.
Okay, thanks, Dr. Miller. May we have our next speaker, please? Good morning, Ms. Brown.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. And Ms. Smith, I've been cleaning, as I said, weeds almost as tall as me around the building, okay? And a lot of times, you know, I realize, when you're using your hands, a lot of times your mind will take you different places. And let me tell you where my mind took me. My husband, Harold Brown, was working for the Pittsburgh Housing Authority for many years. We did landscaping on the side for, it was the widows on our street, we would do their work. But anyway, he taught me how to tip, and he taught me about the weeds. See, the weeds are strong, they're in the foundation, they're dug into the ground, they're packed in there. If you think you can just pull the weed out, you can't. But he showed me, you wiggle it, you move it around, you shake it, and you can even twist it, and you can pull it, all of it comes out. I'm saying this because of the way Mr. Kraus is doing his meetings. The way he does the meetings, he is shaking the foundation. You just don't know how it's supposed to be running. Do you understand? I know you don't. But when I went over to the county council, I've been telling you that when he's out of order, you're supposed to say, "Put the order." And if he, he cannot just make one decision, like, "Out, Ms. Brown, out." Hey, when I went over there to county council, they explained to me, because they were saying, I said, "Well, the whip is not going to let me speak," because I called, and they said, "No, he can't do it alone." The whole council makes that decision. Now, when he made the decision to only give me one minute and thirty seconds, you understand, I've been getting three, three minutes for all these years. And when I stood there and said, "What's, uh, 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 out, hollering," you don't understand. I'm teaching my babies love, and my two grandbabies had to watch him scream and holler at me. I turned around to the young people, "Turn around! Hey, wait a minute! You know what? He's running it like it's his business." I was a state employee. I had to take this test, and the test is that you follow the rules, the laws. You don't change them. He has changed the laws. He, look, I came in for a restaurant. He let me speak first, then he had, because I'm saying, "Are you, will you abide by the law?" After I got finished speaking, you know, he got to talking to them people. He didn't let them go first. And he said, "You have two citations." Why didn't I know that before I spoke? Because that restaurant, people were supposed to speak. Do you understand what he's doing? They have a license out there, bringing it back here to Pittsburgh. So this license where they were drinking, undered as drinking, and somebody left the premises with alcohol, they'll never be charged for that. They'll never, and they can get the restaurant here now? Oh, come on now.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Okay, may we have our next speaker, please? Is there anyone who wants to speak? Okay. No further speakers? All right. That will conclude the public comment portion of the council meeting. Takes us into presentation of papers. We will begin with Councilman Burgess, our Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 2053, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Chief Equity Officer to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement between the City and the Government Alliance on Race and Equity in Order to Receive Training and Develop a Racial Equity Toolkit in an Amount Not to Exceed $26,235, subject to appropriation. Bill Number 2054, Resolution Authorizing Issuing of a Warrant in the Amount of $6,234.14 in Favor of James A. Gordon Jr. for Damage to His Park Vehicle Near the Intersection of Brickland Street and Bel Air Place from a City DPW Salt Truck on January 18, 2019. Bill Number 2055, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into an Agreement with the Community-Based Organizations for Community and Economic Development for Planning Assistance in Various Neighborhoods in the City and Providing Operating Support for These Groups and Provide for the Payment at a Cost Thereof Not to Exceed $700,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Coghill, our Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Gross, our Chair of Land Use and Economic Development. May I have Councilwoman Harris for Councilwoman Gross.
No new papers, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Harris, our Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Lavelle, our Chair of Public Safety Services.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman O'Connor, our Chair of Inner Governmental Affairs. Councilman Lavelle for Councilman O'Connor.
No new papers.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith, our Chair of Public Work Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents Bill Number 2056, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Civil and Environmental Consultants, Inc., in the Amount of $18,488.46 in Emergency Payment for Production of the Nine Mile Run Westland Monitoring Report Due to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection in Order to Comply with PADEP Permit Number EO21367, Department of the Army. Bill Number 2057, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Public Works to Apply for a Grant from the RAAAC Gaming Economic Development Fund for Up to $500,000 to Provide Funding for the Design and Construction of a New Park Building for the Crowley Recreation Center Project. And should the grant be awarded by RAAAC, it's authorized to enter into an agreement with RAAAC. In the event this grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditure...
In the event this grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $500,000 for this stated purpose. The grant does not require a local match. Bill Number 2058, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Public Works to Apply for a Grant from CDEC, DCED Keystone Communities Program to Provide Funding for the Holland Park Pedestrian Tunnel Project. And should the grant be awarded by DCED, are authorized to enter into an agreement with DCED. The grant proposal includes an ask of $500,000 with a local match of $682,638.33 to be contributed by the city in the 2020 capital budget from the Park Reconstruction Line item. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $1,182,638.33 for this stated purpose. Bill Number 2059, Resolution Granting unto ICE Factory Limited Partnership, their successors, and assigns the license and privilege to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense, three protective bolards, and constructing a new stormwater tap in at 143rd Street in the Sixth Ward, Seventh Council District. Bill Number 2060, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Execute Relevant Agreement to Receive Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's Automated Red Light Enforcement Program to Replace Traffic Signals at the Intersection of Bigelow Boulevard and Bayard Street in the North Oakland Neighborhood, and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $165,000. There is no stated match requirement for this grant. Bill Number 2061, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter Into an Agreement with DCED Multi-Module Transportation Fund Program. Should the grant be awarded by DCED, to Provide Funding for Grandview Avenue Project. The grant proposal includes an ask of $1,848,700 with a local match of $792,300 included in the 2020 City of Pittsburgh's capital budget. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $2,641,000 for this stated purpose.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Kelsmith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I, I'd like to make a motion to waive Rule Eight for Bill 2059.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to waive the rules on Bill 2059. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye. Opposed abstentions. 2059 will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee Agenda. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Strasburger, our Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 2062, Resolution Amending Resolution 158, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter Into an Agreement with Computronics for the Provisional of Permitting and Licensing Package at an Additional Cost Not to Exceed $1,480,000 over the Next Two Years.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair has no papers. That takes us into unfinished business, and with no unfinished business before the council, we go into reports of committee for final action. And again, we begin with Councilman Burgess, our Chair in Finance and Law.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 2048, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for September 11, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1937, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Diapolonia Engineering Division of Ground Technology in an Amount Not to Exceed $11,141.41 for Professional Services Regarding Landslide Matters. Bill Number 1938, Resolution Amending Resolution 253, Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with Fox Rothschild LLP for Professional Consulting and Legal Services in Relation to False Claim Act Litigation by Increasing the Total Cost from $110,000 to $235,000. Bill Number 1939, Resolution Amending Resolution 663, Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with McGrail &amp; Associates for Professional Consulting Services in Connection with Billboard Tax Litigation by Increasing the Total Cost from $60,000 to $90,000. Bill Number 1940, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in the Amount of $8,622.50 to Kittleson LLC for Professional Services in Relation to a Lawsuit Filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number 1941, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Kohane &amp; Grisby in an Amount Not to Exceed $4,687.50 for Professional Services in Connection with an Employment Matter. Bill Number 1942, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in the Amount of $5,974.10 to Dicky McCamey &amp; Kilcoe for Professional Legal Services in Relation to Police Matters. Bill Number 1943, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in the Amount of $22,000 to Robert A. Creo for Arbitration Services rendered in Connection with Act 111 Interest Arbitration. Bill Number 1944, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Pharrell &amp; Reisinger in an Amount Not to Exceed $18,241 for Professional Legal Services Regarding a Police Matter. Bill Number 1945, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in the Total Sum of $6,752.32 to Thomas Thomason Hafer for Professional Legal Services in Connection with a Police Matter. Bill Number 1946, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Spillman Thomason Battle in an Amount Not to Exceed $3,494.65 for Professional Legal Services Regarding a Police Matter. Bill Number 1993, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Chief Equity Officer to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement between the City and Coral Pittsburgh for the Purpose of Obtaining a Public Alley to Work on Projects in an Amount Not to Exceed $15,000, Subject to Appropriations. Bill Number 2037, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 855, Adopting and Approving the 2012 Capital Budget and the 2012-2017 Capital Improvement Program by Decreasing Fairhaven Greenway Task Force by $25,740 and Adding Land Force in the Amount of $25,740 and to Further Clear Completed Projects. Bill Number 2038, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 719, Providing for an Agreement for the Purchase of Materials, Supplies, Equipment, and/or Services for Various Projects in Connection with the Neighborhood Needs Program in Council District Four and Providing for the Payment of the Cost Thereof in Order to Enter into Contract with Land Force in the Amount of $25,740 for Work Performed for the Fairhaven Greenway Task Force.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Finance Law Committee. Is there further discussion on any of the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. Councilwoman Harris.
Are these amendments?
No, not for those, Councilwoman. Those will be under our Public Work Services Committee.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, the bills are now ready for final action, and all in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye then, when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill. Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mrs. Kelsmith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Mr. Coghill, aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 aye. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Aye, seven, no zero.
Thank you. The bills, having received then the legally required number of votes, have finally passed. Next, we have our Committee on Public Safety Services with our Chair, Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 2049, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for September 11, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1998, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Savory Equipment in the Amount of $7,285 for the Furnish and Install of Equipment for Fire Bureau Apparatus for the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Fire. Bill Number 1999, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Three Rivers Fire Equipment in the Amount of $13,569 to Paratek Lift Bags and Accessories for the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Fire. Bill Number 2012, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 515, Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to Enter on Behalf of the City into a Two-Year Professional Services Agreement with an Option to Renew for One Year with the Center that Cares for the Purpose of Implementation of the Pittsburgh Group Violence Intervention Street Outreach Program so as to Increase the Funding by $33,333.65 for 2019, $100,000 per year for 2020 and 2021, and $66,666.33 for year 2022. Bill Number 2013, Resolution Transferring Group Violence Intervention Funding within the Department of Public Safety in the Amount of $33,333.65 from the Bureau of Police to the Bureau of Administration.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Public Safety Services Committee. Is there further discussion on any of the bills as read? Okay, seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Aye, seven, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, having received then the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. Next, we have our Committee on Public Work Services, our Chairs, Councilwoman Teresa Kelsmith.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Kelsmith presents Bill Number 2050, Report of the Committee on Public Works for September 11, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1910, Resolution Vacating a Portion of the Right-of-Way at South Negley Avenue and Ava Street in the Eighth Ward and Ninth Council District. Bill Number 1911, Resolution Vacating a Portion of the Right-of-Way at Penn Avenue and South Ukulete Avenue in the Eighth Ward and Ninth Council District. Bill Number 1964, Resolution Granting unto Michael Johnson, his successors, and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense Two Exterior Steel Trellis Structures at the Pursuties Garden Restaurant in the Tenth Ward, Seventh Council District. Bill Number 2003, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter Into an Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Multi-Module Transportation Fund Program. Should the grant be awarded by DCED to Provide Funding for the Riverview Park-Davis Avenue Bridget Project, the grant proposal includes an ask of $1,803,533.20 with a local match of $772,942, included in the 2020 City of Pittsburgh's capital budget. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $2,576,476 for this stated purpose. Bill Number 2004, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter into an Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Multi-Module Transportation Fund Program. Should the grant be awarded by DCED to Provide Funding for the Chartiers Avenue Project, the grant proposal includes an ask of $1,409,24 with a local match of $602,967, included in the 2020 City of Pittsburgh's capital budget. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $2,9891 for this stated purpose. Bill Number 2005, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter Into an Agreement with DCED Multi-Module Transportation Fund Program. Should the grant be awarded to Provide Funding for the Beachview Broadway Plaza, the grant proposal includes the ask of $768,874.98 with a local match of $79,517.98 from the city's 2020 capital budget, and a grant from Allegheny County's Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund of $250,000. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $1,098,392.84 for this stated purpose. Bill Number 2006, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter Into an Agreement with DCED Multi-Module Transportation Fund Program. Should the grant be awarded to Provide Funding for Allegheny Center-North Avenue Improvement Project, the grant proposal includes the ask of $2,330,324.27 with a local match of $998,710.40 included in the 2020 capital budget. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement in the amount not to exceed $3,329,034.68 for this stated purpose.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of these bills under our Public Work Services Committee. Councilwoman Kelsmith, Councilman Burgess has two amendments to offer up. Councilman?
Yes, these are technical amendments suggested by the Law Department, Domian Finance, simply inserting the amount of the cost into the vacation. So, I make a motion that we amend Bill 2019-1910 and Bill 2019-1911 with the written amendments as in the hands of council.
Thank you, Councilman. We have a motion to amend. Is that a second, Councilwoman?
Second, yes.
We have a second, we have discussion on the amendment. Okay, seeing none, all in favor, aye. Opposed abstentions, bills are amended. Is there further discussion on any of the bills as amended? Okay, then seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Aye, seven, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, having then received the legally required number of votes, have finally passed. Our next committee is our Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Councilwoman Deborah Gross is our Chair. May I have Councilwoman Darlene Harris for Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 2051, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for September 11, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1948, Ordinance Amendment and Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title VI, Conduct Article I, Regulated Rights and Actions, Graffiti by Amending the Existing Language of Section 62006 to Replace the Bureau of Building Inspection with the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspection to Allow the Bureau of Police to Prepare and Send Notices and to Clarify the Process for Removing Publicly Visible Graffiti Located on Private Property. Bill Number 1996, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into an Agreement with Agencies to Provide Emergency Shelter Services, Street Outreach Services, Rental Assistant and Housing Relocation, and Stabilization Services or Data Collection Activities as Associated with Emergency Solutions Grant Funds at a Cost Not to Exceed $1,180,626. Bill Number 2026, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Little Kelpie in the Amount of $19,000 for Graphic Design of the Greater Hazelwood Neighborhood Plan Document.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of these bills under our Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Do we have further discussion on any of the bills as read? And seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Aye, seven, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, then, having received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. Our final committee of the morning is our Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Our Chairs, Councilman O'Connor, may I have Councilman Lavelle? May I have Councilman Lavelle for Councilman O'Connor? Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 2052, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for September 11, 2019, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1956, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for 2554 Smallman Street. Bill Number 1957, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for 23rd and Railroad, 23rd Street and Railroad Street. Bill Number 2001, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Works on Behalf of the City to Enter Into an Agreement with the PWSA in Order to Design, Construct, and Maintain a Green Stormwater Infrastructure Project Woods Run Stream Removal Phase One Project Above the City's Property in Riverview Park. Bill Number 2036, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 448, Authorizing the City to Enter Into an Agreement to Execute the Al Qassan Service Agreement Amendment by and Among the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority, the PWSA Authority, the Westmoreland Municipal Authority, the North Huntington Township Municipal Authority, the Township of North Huntington, the Penn Township Sewer Authority, and the Township of Penn Regarding the Cavitzville Aridara Area.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Is there further discussion on any of the bills as read? Okay, seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburg.
Aye.
Mr. Crowe, President.
Aye.
Aye, seven, no, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills having received the legally required number of votes then are finally passed. Madam Clerk, I have one late bill to be read into the record from Councilwoman Gross in her Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Nothing procedural, right? It's just something she didn't read in last week.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 2027, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of City Planning to Apply for a Grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Keystone Communities Program to Provide Funding for the Sawmill Run Zoning Study. And Should the Grant Be Awarded by DCED, are Authorized to Enter into an Agreement with DCED.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That takes us into motions and resolutions. I have some just brief meeting announcements. Council will meet tomorrow morning, Wednesday, September 18, at 9:30 a.m. for a pre-agenda interview for the Director of the Office of Management and Budget. Council's Standing Committee meeting will immediately follow at 10 a.m. And then also tomorrow, we will hold briefing sessions beginning at 1:30 and again at 2:30 so council can be briefed on PCTV and their community needs assessment. If there's nothing further from members, may I have a motion to excuse our absent member and adjourn our meeting?
Second.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
All right. We'll see.[1741.92]